Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have public comment. And before we have public comment, I just want to remind speakers that we have a time limit to three minutes. And if you could please state your name at the mic. First, we have Edna Litten. Thank you, Ms. Litten. Next, we have Fran Porter.
Uh, I think if you move your, um, move the mic, you can speak into it. So you should be able to hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
For the board members, my name is Fran Porter, Representative for Altamont in Altamont. I am a member of the Gilderlin School District. A few years back. So, and I wanted to just take a moment to express my appreciation for your sacrifice and the hard work you've done to make sure that this has been, um, the best possible education for our students. With that, tonight, I would like to talk with you about the issue of synthetic turf on our athletic fields. The vote that was taken by the school board on August 10th approved the use of funding in the upcoming school bond for a synthetic turf playing field. And I know that that approval has been given, but I, I still feel that given that there was no opposition offered in the time during that meeting, that it's important to offer such opposition right now for the record. And so that's what I will do. I want to share four major points with you that I feel are reasons not to use synthetic turf. One is heat. One is toxicity. Another injury. And I think finally, um, the, the issue of disposal. So these are the four things that I'll briefly address. One is that we know that the, the playing fields of synthetic turf actually get very hot in the sun. They have recorded temperatures of a hundred and fifty plus degrees, and there is a potential for injury to our athletes, including serious burns. Two is as far as the, um, the toxicity. We know that there are in, in grass, in plastic grass, in tire crumbs, there are at least three hundred and twenty-nine known chemicals that make up that, um, that material, and we're still identifying new chemicals. Many of these are carcinogenic and, and toxic.
Ms. Porter, your time ran out. Can you just wrap it up in the next thirty seconds?
Yes. Um, I will say that we know that the women's soccer team has sued for the World Cup to be played on a natural grass surface, and as of two thousand twenty-three, that will be the case, just as it is with the men's playing field. The NFL Players League has expressed the desire to have all surfaces for football be on, um, natural gas, grass because of the injuries, particularly foot and ankle injuries. And finally, disposal is going to create a major difficulty. Uh, we have, we'll have a massive amount of disposal of this material. We can't bury tires, so I'm not sure how that plays with tire crumbs, but the amount of disposal is going to be an environmental disaster because these chemicals will have to be in landfills, and there's a possibility that they will leak. So for these reasons, um, I, I've never voted against a school budget or a bond, and it would, it would greatly pain me to do so, but I feel that I can't support a bond if it includes synthetic turf. So thank you very much for your attention. Sorry to go over.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Porter. I understand that there's another public comment that was written also about the turf, so we can talk about that after I read through the other, um, public comments. So we have five written public comments, and I'll start. The first one is from Megan and Edward Di Martino. It reads, Dear Board of Education, first, let me start by thanking the board for their recent efforts working on the best-case reopening plan possible. I'm particularly impressed with the goal-setting and reflecting process that has been implemented and aligned to our community's recent obstacles. At the last Board of Education meeting and from the most recent Altamont Enterprise article, you've communicated very clearly to our community that, quote, "In the midst of the pandemic, meeting students' social and emotional needs, treating the whole student, should be this year's top priority." I question the board's awareness that this goal in particular has been shared with all teachers and staff. They, as the main stewards of our students' education and well-being, should be made aware that this is paramount. I agree this goal, in fact, should overshadow other priorities during the, these unprecedented times. It doesn't seem real. We are in the midst of a world pandemic. Has the board had conversation about fully remote students who will be returning in person this fall? I believe these students may be much more vulnerable to transitioning back to this year's instructional format. I received a kidney transplant years ago, and I'm at far greater risk for contacting, contracting COVID, even as a fully vaccinated person and devout mask wearer. Because of my health, my son did not have a choice to attend school in person last year. He was also not allowed to play sports. In fact, upon the medical advice of his pediatrician and several of my specialists, our son was not able to participate in any in-person activities like homecoming. Undoubtedly, this was a challenge for him as a junior in high school. Our son is cautiously optimistic about returning to school in person. He has always played two sports each year and participates in ski club as well as summer travel teams. High school soccer tryouts occurred over the past week. Our son was eager to see his friends and worked hard. He was the only senior who did not make the team. He was handed a slip of paper and walked off the field with no explanation from any coach as to why. His friends almost instantly knew that he was the only senior to have walked away. The main reason given by the athletic directors to why our son was cut from the team was that the varsity coach does not keep seniors if they didn't play their junior year. Our son also reached out to the coach directly via email. Coach expressed that he believed our son hadn't played the last two years and that he had, and he didn't play well in his normal goalie position during tryouts. Neither of these points are accurate. Our son has never played goalie on a Gilderlin soccer team, and the only year he was unable to play was last year. Let me make it clear, the purpose of this letter is not for anyone to make exception for our son. He's not playing soccer this year. He was cut. Rather, I'd like the board and community to be aware of our grave disappointment with this decision in hopes it doesn't occur with other students. Despite the circumstances, our son has vowed to attend every varsity soccer game this year in hopes of being able to lend the support, uh, to lend, to lend the team support in any way he can. We are incredibly proud of his perseverance despite the adversity he is facing. As the board strives to meet the goals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, consider this an example where it's already not working. Unprecedented times would hopefully allow for some unprecedented decisions. Respectfully submitted, Meg and Edward Di Martino. The next public comment is from Rob Carl. It says, please require COVID-19 vaccinations for all Gilderlin Central School District staff. My son will be entering the sixth grade next year at Farnsworth Middle School, and he is eleven years old. I want him to be safe. Thanks, Rob Carl. The next public comment comes from Susan Went. This reads, Dear Ms. Wiles and school board members, the most recent email sent out by our athletic director, Dave Austin, regarding vaccination and testing requirements for our student athletes this fall is utterly confusing. It stated that unvaccinated students were not going to be tested as a routine matter in all sports, only high-profile moneymaker contact sports like football and basketball. I was a little shocked by that, as were most parents of other athletes I know. It's just a week or so before that we had received a different email stating that all athletes would be required to show proof of vaccine or be required to submit for regular testing. Now the policy is just to test immune-compromised athletes. Only, I'm really unclear as to what the actual policy is at this point, and I'm extremely unnerved by the district's obvious catering to a small, bullying, anti-vaccine, anti-mask group. My children are cross-country runners. They sit around on the field, shoulder to shoulder, with their friends before practice and during stretches. It's ragweed and mold season, allergies abound, and the aerosols that spray from their noses and mouths when they sneeze or cough as they will, they will hit others in the face. They are also at risk for COVID, just as a football team is. Just because they don't touch each other as much doesn't mean that there isn't an inherent risk. COVID aerosols linger in the air for minutes to hours, depending upon the concentration of droplets, relative air humidity, conditions for circulation and air exchange. That puts all athletes at some risk. What of the middle schoolers, students whose parents are chomping at the bit to get their children vaccinated but can't because their birthdays don't fall until later in the year? Don't their children deserve the same respect and caution for their health? Are they just supposed to withhold their students from the physical and mental health benefits of sports simply because the district refuses to mitigate the risk of infection? The district can't keep changing its mind and making it up as they go along. It's not fair to the majority of the school community who's trying to do the right thing and keep our kids and family safe. The district website makes one thing clear. GCSD does not have a comprehensive plan to mitigate the risk of COVID transmission amongst its students or its staff this year outside of masking and a three-foot distancing policy. Would it make more sense to mitigate the risk of COVID transmission to the fullest extent possible, particularly for athletes, rather than to fight the consequences of not doing so after the fact? If all unvaccinated athletes and students aren't submitted to weekly athlete or random in-school student testing, we aren't keeping the ball rolling. We are waiting for the ball to drop. The first positive case has already been announced within the modified girls' cross-country team. There is no further information available on the student who tested positive, but I do know several other athletes on the team who are not vaccinated, and they are all at risk from exposure. We are not without great risk this year. Take a look at other districts around the country. Two hundred fifty-two thousand students across the U.S. have tested positive just this week upon returning to school. That's a quarter of a million children infected in just one week. Does the district really think we can escape this virus with the plans that are out of place, that are in place? Thank you, Linda. The full, um, letter will be posted on the website with the minutes. The next public comment, just waiting for this to load, is from Bethany Stewart. It says, to the Board of Ed members and Superintendent Wiles, as you all are all aware, busing this school year has gotten off to a terrible start that does not seem to have any forthcoming resolution. My sixth grader has been home forty-five minutes late every day. We often have not been emailed that the buses were running late until we had already been at the bus stop for twenty-five minutes past, when the children are supposed to arrive. Yesterday, I stood at the bus stop for one hour, worried my children, my child had gotten on the wrong bus because we were not informed the buses were running late until twenty-five minutes after he was supposed to get off the bus. When I tried to call the school to see if he was okay, I could not get through. I understand there's a bus driver shortage. I also believe there were mistakes made when the new start and end times of the schools were figured out and the time needed for busing to account for the schedule changes was determined. Be that it is may, be that as it may, parents need answers. If the buses will be late every day, we need to know, as do our kids. If we need to pick them up, we need to know that. Many of us have jobs and childcare issues to contend with, and not knowing where our children, when our children will arrive home or get on the bus to school is untenable. It is also very unfair to the children, some of whom, like my son, have special needs and grow very anxious when they have to wait around for buses each day and don't know when those buses will arrive and when they will get home. Whatever the solution is, even if the answer is that the district doesn't have one, parents and students alike deserve to know that information. Thank you. Bethany Stewart. The last public comment is from Edna Litten. Since synthetic turf playing fields are controversial, the field at the high school should really be presented as a separate issue. Many professional athletes do not want to play on synthetic turf field. The head of the National Football League Players Association said that the sport is dangerous enough, and the players do not want the additional risks, including double the rate of foot and ankle injuries of playing on synthetic turf. Women's World Cup soccer players protested having to play games on synthetic turf while the men got to play on grass until the organization agreed to require all of the women's games to be played on real gra, real grass by twenty-twenty-three. It seems fiscally unsound to include more than a million dollars of funding for a synthetic turf playing field at Gilderlin High School in a bond issue with fifteen-year term when most synthetic fields wear out after eight to ten years, even the manufacturers say the last ten to twenty years, which could mean well that, could mean well that the field would have to be replaced before Gilderlin taxpayers have finished paying for it. I wonder if the bond includes funding to pay for the removal and disposal of the synthetic turf when it is worn out. An expense at the school district will be irrationally committed to once the field is installed. Respectfully submitted, Edna Litten. I just want to, um, bring up the, the first, uh, public comment that was written. Is that something that can just be, um, it sounded like there was some confusion between the coach, athletic director, and family? I don't know if we can just follow up with that?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Wiles. Um, the next public comment was about vaccinations, which I know we'll be talking about later in the agenda, and same with number three, the vaccination with athletes. And, um, the buses, Neil, I don't know if you could just talk briefly about the busing situation?
Sure. Um, as well as, you know, the writer implied here, we are having some delays with our, our buses this year. It's not atypical to be running a little behind on our first couple of days in a typical year. Um, we do need to make sure that, that, um, our drivers are familiar with the routes, that the children are out there on time, they're still learning where their bus stops are and their locations. Uh, first few days, parents sometimes want to take pictures and do those sorts of things, especially for kindergartners. So, um, it does take a, a little bit for those runs to get smoothed out. That usually happens pretty quickly in the first few days, once everybody gets the routine and understands when the bus is coming, when I should be out there. Driver becomes familiar with the children and the routes, and it, it does tend to smooth out. Um, we've made progress over the last several days. It has gotten better. We are still finding some situations where, uh, buses are late, later than certainly we would like at this point. One of the issues this year that, um, we didn't anticipate as much with the return of, to in-person schools, there's still a large number of parents driving at the elementary level. So we have certain schools that are very difficult to handle a large volume of traffic coming in on a very short period of time. Pine Bush, Gilderlin Elementary, and Westmere in particular have one way in, one way out. Middle School, that applies to as well. And, uh, when you have a large number of cars that can't get through, that are lining up to disembark kids, they get there for the buses, then we have the buses in the line with the cars trying to get to the drop-off location. So, um, that's been a challenge for us that we're trying to work on, trying to get that traffic flow, but, um, we're all going through, all of those vehicles and all the buses are all going through the same loop at the same time. Uh, so we are looking at solutions. We don't have anything firm at this point. We're trying to, to see ways that we can get buses in quicker, which will make sure that they get out quicker, and then the routes, the timing of the routes will improve. Uh, we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday to have another discussion about this, uh, to see how, what ideas we might have to try to make the situation a little bit better. But we are aware, we are working on it. Uh, we're, we're trying to find some ways to help improve the traffic flow so that we can get kids in on time and kids home on time.
Thank you, Neil. Go ahead, Gloria.
Uh, Neil, what's the procedure for getting word out, say, to parents that the bus is going to be late? Is there any?
Typically, it's an SNN.
Yeah, I've seen a few that, of the schools that I get the SNN for, but like, you know, parent waiting, and it's like, I don't know, half an hour, an hour, or whatever, is the only way, like, through that? Is there any other?
Yeah, that's really our best source at, at that time, um, to have that information.
That's school, um, tracking?
Typically would go from, at the school level, just because that's the parent group that they would have access to. So if it's a Gilderlin Elementary bus route that's running behind, it would go to the Gilderlin Elementary parents.
What about the, uh, the service that, you know, we had, you can look on your phone when the bus is arriving and?
Yep.
Will that indicate that the bus is running late, where the bus is?
Yes, that's the My Stop application. Although that hasn't been fully up and running yet at the start of the year, but that's another tool. We just need to get that working as well.
Thank you, Neil. I, I know some people had suggestions, but it sounds like you guys will be meeting to kind of assess where the situation is, and I know the bus driver shortage is all across the state. So, um, I know Kelly suggested maybe using the COVID funds, but it, it sounds like it's an ongoing issue, trying to come up with, being creative and finding ways to try and, um, get more drivers, recruit more drivers.
Yes, and, and we've done a number of things to do that. We've actually had several new drivers. We've also lost several drivers, so we haven't had a net gain yet, unfortunately. Uh, but everybody is putting, I, I want to say, our transportation department has been working very hard over the summer. We revised our times. Uh, we've had less drivers available. Um, we've had to contract up some routes as, as well. Everybody has been doing the best they can to serve our students and, and get their transportation needs met. It has been difficult, um, with the shortage of, of drivers. We have many members of our transportation department that are in supervisory roles or mechanics that we've had to use as bus drivers, uh, to, to get through our day-to-day routines, which isn't ideal, but we're trying to pull all of those resources to make sure we can get students where they need to be and, and on time. But, um, routing in a regular year is very difficult, and routing, uh, still in the vestiges of a, of a pandemic becomes even straighter and, and even greater, and then with a shortage of drivers and trying to manage all of those, um, routes is, is another thing as well. So, uh, we appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. Um, we know it's, it's not perfect, and we're working very hard to try to, to make it better as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Neil.
Since we're talking about it now, I just want to say the two, um, suggestions that were brought up by FMS parents last night, as you look into the staffing issue, one is a bonus, like, uh, Kelly brought up, and then two is recalling or begging retired bus drivers to come back and work for us. Thank you to the parents that made those suggestions.
The begging has happened, I reckon. See you now.
Uh, the, the public comments about the synthetic turf, I, so I'll have maybe somebody on business practices or facilities talk about it, but I just wanted to first add that I think the discussion about the turf has been probably for the last two years, and before it's been brought to the board level, it was at, um, business practices, it was facilities, and, um, and I know communications is still going to be meeting to talk about the, the bond and getting the word out, but it might be good to, I don't know, think about putting something on the school website, like FAQs about the turf, because I think, you know, even though we've been talking about it, not everybody in the community, um, will have heard the full discussion. So if, you know, if the comments and public comment are questions about, um, the cost and the toxicity, et cetera, I think it might be worthy to put something like that on the website, answering those, um, questions. But does anybody on business practices or facilities want to talk about that process a little bit?
Well, we haven't met this year yet, so, um, you know, last year, but I, I think that probably FAQs are, are a better way and more current, um, to describe what's going on and how we, how we got to where we got to.
If I remember correctly, turf was, I think, brought up before COVID hit and was in discussion for some time before, and then when COVID hit, I remember that we kind of paused that discussion, but, um, I'm sure there are other people who are more involved in those, um, facilities discussions than, than I was, so I don't know if anybody else remembers anything before that time?
I will say, I mean, on the, when we were doing, preparing the project, uh, Dave Austin did prepare, and I don't know if it was shared at the larger board meeting, it answered a lot of the questions that were raised tonight, you know, about the, uh, rubber balls and the, and, uh, and the, you know, the injuries, all that stuff. It was answered, and we can certainly, I'm sure Dave can provide that so we can put into a more clear facts, something, whether it's on the website or wherever.
And I think it is important because people do have a lot of questions. At this stage, it's, it's hard to answer questions since it's part of the bond issue. I mean, it's not hard to answer the questions, but to take this off of the bond issue is not something that we can do at this point, but we don't want to have people voting no because they don't like the turf field, whereas maybe their questions could be answered.
Right. I mean, I think the important part for people to know is that there's been years in the process of discussing the pros and cons of, of putting this up for a vote in the community, but, um, you know, taking some of that information that we found along the way and making it available to the public so they can make that decision based on the information that was there. So I know the public meeting, um, I don't remember the last several public meetings that had talked about turf. I don't know how far back we have to go, but I definitely know that we've talked about some negative, I guess, some cons of having turf as well. I don't think it was smooth sailing all along the way, but that's, that's what I remember. But it has been at least since twenty nineteen, I think, that we've been talking about turf.
I'll, I'll just jump in. A useful resource on this topic is a document put out by the Center for Environmental Health through the New York State Department of Health, and it's called Information About Crumb-Rubber-Filled Synthetic Turf Athletic Fields, and it raises a number of the topics that we heard about this evening. So we are preparing some frequently asked questions to go on our website and to distribute even more widely, if that's helpful, but there is a summary on the last page of this where they talk about heat stress and injury, um, infection, um, latex allergy, chemical exposures. So there is some information there, and we're, we're happy to share that with the, with our community.
I, thanks, Dr. Wiles. I know that there'll be PTA meetings where people will start, uh, board members will start, um, giving out some more information about the bond vote, so that might be another way to, um, answer questions about any, any of the concerns that were brought up tonight. Any other comments?
Well, I think Cliff addressed some of these questions, too. So if anybody wanted to check one of the, um, previous meetings on YouTube, I, I do remember him speaking to the safety concerns and the environmental concerns.
Okay, so we'll move on to the consent items. That includes the minutes of the August 24th meeting, the CSC and CPSC recommendations, personnel action, textbooks, and financials. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Nate, second Blanca, any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, so we'll have, it passes seven zero and we had Barb Epstein. Thanks, Barb. Next on the agenda, information items, Superintendent Information, Dr. Wiles?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I just wanted to provide some brief update on our COVID-19 protocols. Some of them will be very familiar to all of you. This year, we are following the universal masking indoors and on the school buses. We are practicing three feet of social distancing whenever possible throughout our classrooms and really throughout our operations. We've also focused in on increased ventilation, cleaning protocols, and then plans for contact tracing and quarantining students when we do have a positive case. We also have a new directive to begin testing unvaccinated staff, and that would be all unvaccinated staff, and eventually students as well with parent consent on a weekly basis. This requirement comes from the New York State Department of Health. We're currently working with the Albany County Department of Health to operationalize the plan. Albany County and actually our surrounding counties as well have contracted with an organization called Quadrant Biometrics, who will provide the tests and the lab analysis for these tests. So later in the agenda, you're going to be asked to renew our limited service laboratory agreement with Albany County, which gives us the ability to do this here on campus. So we still have quite a few questions about how this will unfold. We have a meeting on Friday with the Albany County Department of Health to get some more insight into this. But our first step will be to gather proof of vaccination from all of our employees to understand the scope of testing that we will need to do. I know we had a question earlier today about our testing protocols for athletes. Currently, our protocol is to test all unvaccinated athletes who participate in high-risk sports. In the fall, those sports are football, volleyball, volleyball because it's indoors, and cheerleading. We gathered this information earlier from all of our athletes as kind of a first step to understand the scale of students we would have participating in sports who are unvaccinated. At the time we gathered that, we only had the leftover rapid tests that we used for last year's screening, so we didn't know what our capacity for testing would be or our access to those tests. That's why we landed before this most recent directive from Albany County came out with the idea of testing our unvaccinated high-risk sports. So we're continuing to work on this. I know this is a topic of some consideration. And when all is said and done, we are working as hard as we possibly can to keep our students and our staff safe and in school and learning. So I'll end there and take any questions or comments.
I just wanted to bring up that CDC guidelines for return to schools from early August recommend that in areas where the level of community transmission is high, like in Albany County, cancellation of high-risk sports should be done unless all student athletes are vaccinated. New York State DOH guidance from early September mirrored the CDC guidance and recommends that high-risk sports and extracurriculars be virtual or canceled in areas of high community transmission unless all participants are fully vaccinated. Therefore, I might be doing this procedurally wrong, I make a motion for a resolution that GCSD follow the expert guidance, follow other community districts like Bethlehem, Disuunat, and Albany, and require vaccination for high-risk eligible student athletes, as long as Albany County remains an area of high community transmission.
Rebecca, can you remind me, is that for 16 and up? Or we're going to make that distinction?
I mean, the CDC guidance, Dr. Rivera, does not actually, you know, separate it out by age. Says all vaccine-eligible student athletes. I think my motion would be for all eligible student athletes, but I think maybe part of our discussion could be what limitations do you want to put on them?
I'll second it so we can move to discussion.
Okay, so first motion from Rebecca, second Gloria. Now we can have comments and questions about that. I just want to add that process-wise, that we've been following the guidance all along, so I don't see why we want to veer from that. And I think it would be appropriate to give students who are 16 and up, because that's FDA-approved, that guide, like, that, I guess, those rules to follow, but we give them, I don't know, two weeks to at least go get vaccinated, get the first vaccination and be on the path to being vaccinated. That's just my take. I know that some people would argue for 12 and up, but because it's not FDA-approved, I don't know if, you know, I know we're kind of putting ourselves out there to liability for doing this and there's no clear answers, but I think the 16 and up would be, you know, in my opinion, that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I agree that we should not do 16 and younger. And as you said, I would, I wouldn't want to start this tonight or tomorrow and then cause harm to the sports that have already started. So this guidance came out August 5th. We've started many sports August 23rd. We didn't let our players know ahead of time that this was going to be happening. So I think it's only fair, like you said, Sina, to give them some time. New York State has given their employees five weeks to get both shots. So what you recommend, I think, two for the first shot and then maybe three, two or three for the second shot makes sense so that nobody is immediately cut from the team or anything like that.
And I assume for other students that would be testing for the 12 and?
Yeah, for the 12 and up. Right now, Dr. Wiles, is it test, are those students tested once a week?
Right now, it's once a week. As I mentioned, we have new access to more tests. So one of the conversations we had was to potentially increase the amount of testing for unvaccinated students in the interim and then look for fully vaccinated for the winter season.
I mean, it sounds like the 12 and up is, once the tests are available, to move it to two times a week, the ones that are in high risk at least.
Right.
Would seem appropriate. And also, you know, if we do that for the winter and not for the fall, I know it's not the beginning of the season, but it's still fairly early on. I don't see why we, you know, forego that fall season and then just do that to the winter and spring. Or I don't know what will happen in spring. Can't plan that far ahead, but at least winter.
Do we have an idea of how many students in 16 and up that are not vaccinated? Do you have any idea of the numbers?
I think there were 25 total.
That's nine, 12.
Yeah, freshmen, JV, and varsity.
I mean, 16 and up, that would be?
I don't know.
Okay.
If they're 16 and up.
So it could be less?
On the high-risk sports that Dr. Wiles talked about.
I mean, I think we, you know, the outset for this school year was to try to get everybody back in person, and that was, that is, should be, and is our goal. And as much as it pains me to take away any student's opportunity or privilege to play a sport, we need to keep that overarching goal in mind and to continue what has been the board's position on this is to follow those who know better than us, which is the CDC in this instance. And again, I don't like it, but it is the right decision. And I think it's the way we have to go. And I definitely agree, it's 16 and up. And to give some time, two weeks. I will say, my private employer gave you three days. So my secretary just got back. I mean, it's tough. That was a month ago. And that's tough. But, you know, I think a week or two weeks is certainly plenty of time for, quite frankly, parents to make the decision. It's not a student's decision if they're not 18, whether they, you know, so, you know, we are not taking away, we're not forcing them to get vaccinated. We are giving them a choice whether they want to continue to play. And to play is a privilege, not a right.
I completely agree with that. Barb?
You know, my position on this, I really think we're overstepping our bounds here. Our students have suffered so much in the way of not being able to socialize, not being able to play sports without masks on. They've experienced an entire summer of being kids again, not having to wear masks. They played baseball. They played basketball. They played softball, all kinds of sports. And we didn't have any massive outbreaks. The athletic department has gone, bent over backwards to put in safety protocols for the practices for what they're calling high-risk sports. Now they're calling volleyball a high-risk sport because it's played indoors. It's played indoors in a huge gymnasium with very few spectators normally, and yet some bureaucrat is calling it a high-risk sport. Obviously, to me, wrestling or maybe even football is a little more high-risk. But you're denying a parent and a child the decision-making process. We today have a court decision of a regulation that all healthcare workers have to be immunized. I think we're going to face the same type of a situation if we mandate this. We can encourage it. You know, we know that the vaccine is effective for those who have had the vaccine, even the new variant. People get sick, but it's like with a cold or with the flu for the most part. And this disease is something that I think we're all going to have to live with. And as I said, I just can't see forcing a parent to have their kid vaccinated in order for them to be able to play a sport. We know how important sports are in the development of a child, in their love of coming to school in many instances. And I know I'm speaking as a minority here, but I have just seen so much damage and the statistics prove it out, that when you begin taking away the socialization of kids, your suicide rate increases and the whole idea of even the younger children not being able to see faces, socialize, we're going to be paying the price 10, 15 years down the road. This is even the pediatric community saying how important it is for little kids to socialize and to be able, to be with their peers. So I would adamantly say that we should be in the group of schools, which is the majority, that are not requiring this. What you're saying, requiring vaccinations, but you're not even taking into effect the natural immunity that may exist. We have requirements for vaccinations for measles, mumps, rubella, diphtheria, et cetera. But we have the ability of the parent to test out of that if the child has been exposed and has the antibodies. And yet here we are saying, I don't care if you've had COVID or not, or if you have the antibodies, you have to get a shot. So as I said, I know I'm the minority here, but I certainly would hope that we give these students an opportunity and, you know, monitor. As I said, our athletic department has bent over backwards with all the safety measures that they have available to them. And I think to undercut kids that have started this sport now, if you want to talk about this for the winter season, where there's more indoor situations and people are closer together, but to do it now, what, almost three weeks into the season and maybe give them a week or two and force them into a vaccination situation, I think is just unfair. But that's just my point of view.
I don't disagree with the benefits of sports. I'm so thankful that we have sports available this year. My kids are playing sports and I'm so grateful for that. But it is a privilege to play sports. And I think to weigh that against having all kids in school, because we're not talking about vaccinations for just students being in school, we're talking about those who choose to play, choose to play a sport that's in high-risk category and they're eligible to be vaccinated and it's FDA-approved. So to have a choice. And it sounds like it's probably less than 25 kids. I don't think we're overreaching here. And it sounds like we're going to be moving in that direction for the winter sports as well. I don't know why we'd wait at this point. Rebecca?
I was just going to say, the American Academy of Pediatrics signed on and endorsed the CDC recommendations to her latest. Which spell out these guidelines.
And I would push back on this idea that it was a bureaucratic decision. This is the CDC. These are scientists, doctors, the pinnacle of the people that we should be listening to about this pandemic. It's not some bureaucrat politician who's trying to force something down a kid's throat. These are scientists and doctors who do this for a living. And it is the same people that we have been listening to throughout, directing our guidance and how we are going to approach this, getting our kids back into school. Now, that's the point. If we're going to let non-vaccinated kids, we're going to ignore what the CDC is telling us on this issue. And we start losing kids because they're unvaccinated playing sports and they spread and there's an outbreak, that destroys the entire purpose of what we're trying to do, which is keep kids in school in person. That's the socialization. I agree. I am a huge advocate of sports. I played sports all through high school. I coached sports. It is incredibly important, but it shouldn't overtake keeping our kids in school learning. That's what we're here for. We're not here to create a sports academy, unfortunately. We need to keep the kids in school and we need to be doing what we've been doing all along, which is following the CDC guidelines.
I also see vaccines as a way of keeping us playing sports, as someone who supports athletes. And like Nathan said and like Rebecca said, these are professionals, not bureaucrats. They devoted their lives to science and this is studied. And Barb, what happened in the summer is really like neither here nor there because this virus is changing and so we need to adapt and there will be ebbs and flows. And we're doing what we're supposed to. We're following the guidelines from the experts and reacting to the current situation.
Barb?
Just in response to that, if we just look over just the past year, let alone the 18 months, how many times the CDC has changed their recommendations? We had two FDA scientists just the other day resign because they didn't feel that we should be promoting a booster shot yet. So there's disagreement even within the scientific community. And I think for us to take one side or the other, and just to say because we've always followed these guidelines, you know, these kids, particularly with football, they're outdoors, they're, I'm sure their coaches are making sure that they're, you know, washing their hands and not sharing bottles and all these kinds of things. And as I said, I'm just distressed that we would potentially eliminate the team. I think we were told that the modified team might lose enough players that they couldn't host, you know, have a squad. And maybe some of these kids aren't even eligible, you know, for the vaccination. So again, I just do not support mandating, encouraging, yes, but mandating. I can't see taking that away from the parent. The parents, for the most part, love their kids, they want what's best for them, and if it's their decision that they're afraid of the vaccine or whatever, I think they should have that right.
This doesn't impact modified though at all. This is just talking about 16 and up. So this would just be, I guess, you know, 10th grade and up. Essentially, we're not modified 7th and 8th grade?
7th and 8th, yeah.
Yeah, so we're not talking about, I mean, they're not 16. So we're talking about, you know, 16 and up, FDA-approved. And I just want to make the point that, about the whole science piece, science is tentative. So what we know about the vaccine and the virus now is different from March 2020. But we do know that we've been following the guidance all along, and I don't see any reason why any of us would know better than the CDC to decide, oh, we're going to follow the guidance and now we're just not going to because, I don't know, it just seems like a lot. I mean, who are we to decide that?
And if it changes, we react. I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, this isn't, you know, we're not putting a commandment in a stone that says, look, this is how it's going to be for the rest of the time we're here. This, we are reacting to what the CDC is telling us. This, we are reacting to what the CDC is telling us. We're actually delayed in reacting to it. We should have done it a while ago. And that's on us. That's our fault. We made a mistake. We're doing it now. So, and if it changes in a month, we're here in a month, we'll talk about it. But right now, what this is telling us is this is what we should be doing. And again, as much as it absolutely pains me, absolutely pains me, but this is what the correct, the right thing to do is. You know, as much as I'd like to listen to my heart, we got to listen to what our brains are telling us.
So this motion's on the floor. Does anybody else have comments or questions? Who didn't get to speak yet? Kelly?
I agree with the 16 or plus FDA-approved. And as well, as soon as the 12 and plus one does get approved, we need to revisit it immediately. Like, not wait for the next meeting in a month. Let's learn from our mistakes this time and make a decision appropriately then. And I'm good with the doing a deadline of like maybe October 1st. But until then, then we need to aggressively test people that are unvaccinated at all, always. Like, I think twice a week is inappropriate unvaccinated testing for anybody. And there's nothing about like antibody test out or anything like that. And you see, I don't think I read anything about, like, what Barbara was talking about. It's like, yeah, we all know there's a possibility that you have antibodies in your body. We don't know how long it's going to last. They don't mention anything about if you've already had it, I don't believe, but that's a whole different thing. And the third, the last point is, since if we are going to make this decision tonight for the winter and the spring sports, I don't think there should be any grace period, like, just put it out there right now, that we expect people to be vaccinated for the winter and spring high-risk sports.
We just craft it as student athletes. Any athlete interested in playing a sport?
We've got to get ahead of this sometime.
High-risk category.
At any point in this year, it has to be vaccinated, or at least get their first shot in two weeks.
That's where I stand.
16 plus.
Gloria?
I think our, I agree with a number of you. I think our first job is to keep people safe. That's number one. And right up there is to educate our kids, and that means bringing them into school and in person. That's our job. The other, everything else is, you know, beyond that. And I think, my own personal opinion, I want to listen to the experts. They may change because science, you know, deals with facts. And as facts change and situations change, their recommendations will change. I have no problem with that. But I certainly would prefer to listen to CDC and Department of Health than myself or anybody else sitting here. I'd rather, you know, err in that, in that, and I support mandating the vaccines for 16 and up and giving some time for that to happen. And I think we should, as Nathan said, get out in front and make this a policy for the year, as long as we are a high-risk area. I mean, pray that it would change, and Albany County was not, then things would change. But for now, that's where we are.
Judy?
I agree with everybody except Barbara about this, that it's our responsibility to our students. And that's what we're here for, is to take care of our students. And if it's been deemed that high-risk sports, you need to be vaccinated, or you should be, then we should, and give them, I don't know, two weeks, October 1st, whatever, to come to the decision. But I think not vaccinating, you know, I'm not worried about us being in trouble, but I think it's the right thing, and that's what we have to do. And if they change, I think we need to say that this is subject to, you know, like, everybody getting vaccinated before the sports now for the winter or for the rest of the season is subject to CDC guidance. In case it changes in January, we have to be flexible for that.
Anybody else? All right, so is October 1st in two weeks? Because I'm, we're going to vote on a resolution.
A little over two weeks.
What's that?
A little over two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks from Friday.
So is... I didn't know, Rebecca, if you had said in the resolution that you put on the floor, if you had said two weeks or October 1st. I don't remember.
I don't think I said a time, so we could maybe just add that.
Okay.
Motion to add.
Which one, October 1st?
I think October 1st.
So 16 and up in the high-risk categories for fall, winter, and spring sports. And those that are in the fall sports have until October 1st to get their first vaccination. Did I miss anything?
With the understanding that if things change, you know, we might have to change this.
Right, that's always, right? And even if the 12 and up becomes FDA-approved, I personally would want to revisit that as well. But yeah, that's always subject to change based upon the guidance changing.
Right, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
I just interrupt. If we're going to do it, should we do it the right way? In other words, you have to, because this is presented today and we're voting on it today, do the...
Make a motion to suspend the rules?
Right.
Okay. So the motion to suspend the rules, Nate, second Rebecca? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes eight zero. And now we'll have a vote to vote on the resolution that Rebecca made the recommendation for.
Can we say it like one time altogether?
Sure, so we're voting on students who are vaccine-eligible, so 16 and up, who are playing high-risk sports in the fall, winter, and spring seasons. Those that are in the fall have until October 1st to have their first vaccination. And then three weeks after that to get their second vaccination.
And all other students will need to have it before the season starts.
Yes, and so the winter and spring sports, those students will need to be vaccinated when those sports start.
Second, are we there second yet?
So we already have that, so a vote to approve? Goes against? Okay, so it passes seven one. Thanks, everybody. Sorry, Dr. Wild, do you have more?
I do. My next item is just an update on our universal pre-K program. I am really happy to report that our contracts with our two partners are essentially complete. We submitted our application to State Ed today, the day it was due. We have posted a story to our website, and we are gathering applications for the open slots that are available. These would all be at Kids Corner. We have posted the story to our website. We've emailed and mailed applications to families that we knew of who had four-year-olds. So if anyone is watching and wants more information about this, they should go to our website. There's a story at the bottom with a link to the application. Applications are due a week from Friday, and they require proof of residency in the Gilderlin Central School District. And children need to be four years of age by December 1st. And once we have all the applications, we'll do the lottery and be able to, I'll let people know if they've been selected. So it's been an uphill climb, but we're at the top of the plateau, on this topic, anyway.
I have a quick question. So this year's done, but for next year, is there's a plan to have all of those spots be a lottery? I'm assuming, or are we done with grandfathering and...
Well, we had grandfathered this year because children were enrolled before we even were awarded the grant. So it's my understanding that we would start again probably in February, March, to open this up again to do a lottery. And one of the things that we're contemplating for next year is to release the RFP again to get an additional partner, because we don't believe our current partners will have enough spots to serve all 116 children who we have funding for. So that's one of the conversations that we need to have.
Might push us into another grandfather problem? Can we do it earlier?
Well, no, not if we do it in February.
Okay, all right.
The difference here is we did this in the summer. So. And then last, if there's no questions, last but not least, I just wanted to say, I mean, we talked a little bit about the opening of school. In spite of the challenges that we heard about regarding transportation and which Mr. Sanders spoke about, overall, I would say that students and faculty are thrilled to be back in school. I think they're grateful to be here in what is mostly normal, other than, you know, working on our three-foot social distancing as possible and the requirement to wear masks indoors. Teaching and learning is happening, and we're just thrilled to have everybody back.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Wilds. Next, we have board president information. First, we have a set of policies. I just have one note I wanted to make on the first one, letter A, for public participation. I think in the fourth paragraph, the last line, it says four minutes, but I think we agreed at some point it would be three minutes, right? For a public comment?
We approved it three minutes already.
Yeah, so this policy also has to change to, I think, reflect that, says four minutes. And then the highlighted section are, those are some changes from the meeting this past week. Anybody have any comments about that? This is just up for information. And we have a set of other policies. I just wanted to make a note also on, let's see, to do with safety, oh, no, public conduct on school property. I think the important one to make a point here is that at the, so this applies to everybody, not just students, who are on school property and not just during school times. And so we added, because I know we had a discussion about masks at meetings and the concern about people trying to or refusing to put a mask on. And so that would be violating the board policy on the determination of state statute on mask wearing. That was just listed there as an example. So that kind of covers that. Anybody have questions about that?
I'm assuming there's no exemptions to that, or like medical... There's no exemptions, correct? As far as we know, as far as the public coming here? For example, like we, like the last board meeting, when we had somebody say that they had a...
Yeah, so we have...
It was a medical exemption. There's no process for that, right?
Well, yeah, we had a long discussion of policy about this. And, I mean, there's nobody on site to determine that at the board meeting. And so I think we agreed, and anybody else can speak up if they heard differently, that because we stream our meetings and that we give the opportunity for people to send in public comment, the email, that they're still able to participate in the meeting. But as far as being in the building without a mask, that they would need to have a mask.
Great.
Okay, so this is just up for information this week? Did you want to just keep it at information, Barbara? I forgot if we said we wanted to suspend the rules and vote or wait?
Whatever you're comfortable with. The public participation at board meetings is very simple, a minor adjustment. Mainly that if you want to speak here in person, that you would have to sign up with Linda ahead of time prior to the actual start of the board discussion. Many people found it very disruptive with people coming up during the meeting and, you know, asking to speak. So it's a minor adjustment, just to make the flow better. And I certainly am comfortable if you wanted to do it tonight, so it would apply. If you want to wait another meeting, that's fine, too.
Anybody else have thoughts?
I would weigh in with that for the code of conduct one. It would be helpful to have that in place because school is in session, and our administrators are applying the code of conduct, and this would codify the issues. We haven't had a single issue around mask wearing, but in case there would be, this would say that it's a part of our code of conduct.
So why don't we do both?
A and C?
Suspend the rules.
A, yeah, and C. So I have a motion to suspend the rules. Nate, second Rebecca. And so we're making a motion to approve letter A, public participation.
We have to vote on, should we suspend?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we, can I have a vote to suspend the rules?
For both policies?
For both policies, A and C. Okay, passes eight zero. Thank you, Gloria. And then does someone want to make a motion to, Blanca? So we're looking at letter A, public participation at board meetings, and letter C, public conduct on school property. Making a motion, can I have a second? Kelly?
So you want to change the verbiage, though, of the...
It's in yellow, I think.
Yeah, but just to have three minutes.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll prove it given that it's a three-minute up on it.
Yes. Okay, all in favor? All right. Okay, passes eight zero. So we'll take the other letters that we didn't address, and that will be up for action the next meeting. All right, thank you. Next, we have action items, school business. Neil?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First item this evening is a resolution to approve service agreements with Linda Burkhart and Oak Hill School.
Can I have a motion to approve the service agreements? Kelly, second Barb? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next is a recommendation to approve the agreement with Maria College to accept students for internship and practicum experience.
Can I have a motion to approve the internship agreement? Blanca, second Kelly? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve an agreement to make available college and the high school courses to students for college credit during the 2021-22 school year with SUNY Schenectady Community College.
Can I have a motion to approve a college and high school agreement? Barb, second Gloria? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next is a recommendation to approve the classroom rental agreement with Living Resources to provide an after-school program for students with disabilities for the 2021-22 school year.
Can I have a motion to approve the classroom rental agreement? Blanca, second. Judy, any questions or comments? All in favor? I pass as eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the classroom rental agreement with the Capital District YMCA to operate an after-school children's program for the 21-22 school year.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement with the Y? Nate, second Kelly? Any questions or comments? All in favor? I pass as eight zero.
Next, who has approved the agreement to operate a combined ice hockey team with students from Scotia Glenville, Mahanesson, Shalma, Florisville, and our district.
Can I have a motion to approve the ice hockey agreement? Nate, second Barb? Any questions or comments? All in favor? It passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the memorandum of agreement with the County of Albany for assistance in the implementation of administering COVID-19 testing of staff and students under the county's limited service laboratory, or an alternate limited service laboratory in accordance with the New York State Department of Health requirements.
Can I have a motion to approve the MOA with the County of Albany? Kelly, second Rebecca? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the agreement with Mills Law Firm to provide legal services.
Can I have a motion to approve the law firm agreement? Barb, second Kelly? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, how is this different from what we already have with the Honeywell Law Firm?
This is for a different matter.
Okay, a specific?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to award the bid for dual-purpose copy paper to Liberty Paper, the lowest responsible bidder meeting specifications.
Can I have a motion to approve the E. paper bid? Nate, second Kelly? Any questions or comments? All in favor? I pass as eight zero.
Next is the award a bid for environmentally friendly ice melt to Site One Landscape Supply.
Can I have a motion to approve the ice melt bid? Blanca, second Gloria? Questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the application for corrected tax rule for the tax year 2021-22.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Gloria, second Kelly? Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Gloria, second Kelly. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
And then finally this evening, we received, we have received a number of donations, which we're very grateful for. So the recommendation is to accept the donations for two clarinets from Chang Lee, saxophone and flute from Renee DeLue, a thirty-five millimeter camera from Gail Sazlukniak, and I apologize for probably saying that very badly. Uh, eight backpacks from School Systems Federal Credit Union and notebooks from the Gilderland Chamber of Commerce.
Can I have a motion to approve the donations? Nate, second Blanca. Any questions or comments? Just thank you for all of those donations.
Thank you.
All in favor? Passes eight zero. Okay, thank you, Neil. Uh, next, we have Superintendent Action, Dr. Wiles.
Okay, thank you. My first item is a resolution to certify as qualified lead evaluators for teachers, our principals, including Michael Piscatelli, Michael Lester, Peter Burbank, Alan Lockwood, Christopher Sanita, Bethany, Jaclyn Vandenberg, and Lisa Knowles.
Can I have a motion to approve the certification for lead evaluators? Uh, Blanca, second Nate. Any questions or comments? All in favor? I, passes eight zero.
Uh, my next item is a resolution to certify as que-, uh, qua-, certify as qualified lead evaluator for building principals, uh, superintendent of schools. That would be me to evaluate, um, our seven principals.
Can I have a motion to approve the certification for lead evaluator of principals? Um, Kelly, second Barb. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Um, my next item is a request to approve the professional development plan for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Highlights of the plan include additional professional development for reading and special education teachers on specialized reading instruction, social emotional learning with particular focus on the implementation of the positivity project at grades K through eight, and professional development for and by the coordinator for diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Can I have a motion to approve the PD plan? Kelly, second Nate. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
My next item is a request for the board to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Gilderland Teachers Association. And this memorandum refers to their, um, uh, participation in supervising lunch periods at the elementary school so that students can have lunch in their classrooms. This cuts down on the density of students in our cafeterias.
Can I have a motion to approve the MOA with the, with the GTA? Judy, second Gloria. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
And my last item this evening is a resolution to ratify the agreement between the Gilderland Central School District and the Gilderland Teachers Association for the duration of the collective bargaining agreement, which is July one, two thousand twenty-one, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Can I have a motion to approve the contract ratification? Uh, Blanca, second Judy. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Passes eight zero. Oh, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have board committee reports. I'll start with, um, policy.
You have the fruits of our labors and, um, we'll be meeting again after the new board member is appointed.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Um, what about business practices?
Haven't met yet.
Haven't met, okay. And next, audit. I think we have a meeting-
We, we had a meeting on August eleventh. The notes are in the, in the, uh, online. And our next meeting is August twenty-seventh at nine o'clock.
August twenty-seventh?
Sorry, September twenty-seventh at nine o'clock.
Thanks, Kelly. And communications?
Yeah, we ate, we met last week on September eighth. Um, myself, Judy, Rebecca, and Blanca are the board members there. And we also welcomed Patrice Viveren, Viverito, who is our new Vosse's Communication Specialist. We're very happy to have her. Uh, Neil and Regan and Marie also were at the meeting. We talked about, first of all, uh, the communication regarding the capital project. And, uh, Patrice shared with us a draft for a trifold, which will be, uh, mailed out to all residents in the district. Uh, the group suggested some, several edits to the document, including some changes to some of the images that were chosen. Uh, and we wanted to better emphasize the three parts of the bond issue, which was infrastructure, outdoor learning spaces, and technology. Um, we also, besides those recommendations, uh, we added, we asked her to look into adding the QR code for easy access, so somebody could easily access the website using their, their smartphone. Um, Patrice noted for us that the trifold would be going out to the printer and it would be mailed, uh, to homes ten days before the vote. Uh, we talked about the website. Uh, Patrice informed the committee that there's a lengthy story currently on the website. That includes a complete history of the project going back to October twenty eighteen. So if you want into the history of things, this would be the place to go, if you want the history of how this project moved forward. Uh, we also looked at a poster, uh, that Communications Office has created that can be placed in a number of places around the town and within the district. Um, and it will also be shared with our sports teams and YMCA and things like that to get the, the word out that the, the bond vote, the date and everything like that, and the information regarding the vote. Also a video, uh, Patrick Malowski is coordinating the production of a short video about the project, the bond issue, for social media. And C.S. Arch, the architect, is assisting in this work. So we'll look forward to seeing that. The committee also discussed other strategies about getting the word out about the project, uh, including talking points for board members to use at upcoming PTA meetings over the next, uh, month or so, uh, and for principals to use at their open houses this fall, all of which are virtual. So we want to make sure that the same information is getting out in, uh, to everyone. We talked about a letter to the editor, uh, to, to the editor of the enterprise, uh, getting a letter. And we, we talked about having it come from the whole board. So if we're going to try to do something, we're drafting something that we put, get out, uh, into the ultimate enterprise before the vote, coming from the whole board. Encouraging people to get out, to, to learn about the project, to see what it covers, and then to get out and vote. And regular Friday communications, it's already started. We'll start, uh, going out from the superintendent now that school's underway. Uh, and information about the project and the capital project will also be coming out to us through that. Our next meeting is October thirteenth at four thirty. Thank you.
Uh, was there any discussion about, I, I know you said talking to sports teams, but, uh, reaching out to the booster clubs?
Yeah, that's in the list.
I mean, a number of letters that we got were from booster club members and they, they have a, a built-in network that we could certainly unify. I mean, I, I, I have a mutual softball coach who's a, wrote a letter to us. He's the president of the Pee Wee Football and he's, he's ready and willing to-
They're in the list.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure.
Regan said he would work with Dave to make sure that the coaching staff and all the booster groups, uh, were reminded families to get out and vote.
I, um, I was just going to ask about, so the history of the project you said is on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think there's a plan, like to, because I'm thinking of the, you know, the public comments tonight about, um, the questions about turf. And so even though we've been talking about it for like two years, and just so people see that, that the process that's taken place to get to this, to get that out, so people can see that this wasn't just, you know, sprung out of nowhere.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read the story, but I intend to. Uh, it's on, it's supposed to be on our website at this point. Kind of summarizing all the steps that we've been through.
Does, um, I know Marie, that the, there's mailings that go out to the community or to the, I guess, the school district before the vote, but is there anything sent via email or?
Or what, transcript?
Because what is it, September fourteenth today?
Yeah.
So it's about, it's less than a month away.
Yeah, we're covering that one. So I think, um, the video which we, um, would, uh, video today out, right outside here. So we, um, that will go through our social media, so it'll be more of electronic. Um, Patrice and I spoke about using our Friday communications every one between now and then to focus on some, you know, portion of, aspect of the project. Um, and then obviously to remind folks that the vote is on October seventh at the, in our elementary buildings. So a lot of electronic communication with links to the documents that we have. And, and Patrice was able to build in the QR code on the brochure, so.
That was a good suggestion, Rebecca.
Yeah, that's right. So people can go right to that more lengthy story, which gives the history. It, um, also talks about the three big areas of the project, and it breaks it down by each building. Um, and then there's links to previous board meetings and PowerPoints and the other information that's there. So there's a lot, if you're looking for it.
I think we are also making sure people understand that there, the FAQs are on the web, you know, linked to that because, you know, some good questions were raised tonight. We want to make sure the information gets out.
We'll try to, uh, bring that up maybe higher, because you can, it's long, so you need to stick with it.
I know.
So, um, you know, given these questions, I think they're legitimate questions and, and we can-
Yeah.
Provide some good information about it.
Any other comments or questions about communications? And then we have, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We haven't met yet, um, this school year, but I think, so one of our, um, one of our teachers on the steering committee, um, took a job at another, she moved, so she's gone. So we're looking for another teacher rep there. But I think we'll have to kind of reconvene now that we have, um, a new DEI director who we probably need to have involved in that, um, committee as well.
I have a meeting on the books for twenty-two September.
Yep. Oh, you do?
It's on.
Do, yeah. Well, then forget what I just said.
However, I don't know if it's virtual or if it's in person.
Well, it's scheduled for virtual.
Is it? So I don't have the link yet. We probably get that, but, um.
The steering committee probably needs to-
Yeah, reconvene.
Yep. It's on, we have a meeting scheduled, but.
Yeah, we have a meeting, so just get that out.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Quite a bit of break over the summer.
So I guess the steering committee, we should probably at the least touch base and get the agenda. Um, do you think it's reasonable, Marie, to keep that twenty-second meeting? Because that's what, next week?
Um, you know, I think-
Our new DEI director.
Well, yeah, because the steering committee would meet before we would have the larger group. I just don't want to waste, I don't want to have everybody come to the larger group meeting if.
It's just, it's, it's there. We, there's a plan. Um, I think we do it all this. I think there's a bunch of dates on the books.
Yeah, we have a whole bunch of dates.
I would lean toward doing it, um, even if it's more of a reorganizational kind of meeting.
Yeah, okay.
We get to meet, um, Matt Pincinot.
Yep.
Um, we had some, we could do some discussion around the book that everyone was supposed to read the first three chapters of. We could do a quiz.
I got the first chapter on it. So I'm working on it.
Um, I, I think it's worthwhile to get the momentum going.
Okay.
So, uh, I can reach out tomorrow to set up a steering committee meeting.
Yeah, that would be great. Should we keep that virtual then? Because it's a decent-sized group.
It's a big group.
I would.
It's twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think maybe that's something we talk about with the group. Is do we want to transition to an in-person setting? Because it's going to be three times as big as what we are right now.
Right.
It's hard without speakers and without, here, it's nice to have, I can still, I can actually hear you better with the mics, but. I think online is easier, but.
Well, we have that, um-
For now, at least.
That, I guess, allowance, right, from the governor that we can be online.
Sure.
Right, and it's not a business meeting.
Right, right, right. So I would, I would say that next Wednesday we meet virtually and then go from there.
Start there, for sure.
And maybe we can ask, um, I don't know if Matt knows that that's when we're meeting, but that would be great if we could, or he could introduce himself, not to put him off the spot in the committee. I guess you'll have to be-
We will be fine.
He's probably used to, I guess, that now. Okay. So those are all the committee reports. Um, public comment number two. Are there any public comments, Linda?
I did just email you one.
Oh, okay.
Came in about half hour ago.
Oh, okay. Let me just pull up my email. Okay. This is from Todd Patori. Okay. So the, um, public comment is from Todd Patori. Says, "I applaud you for taking the step to require vaccination for students sixteen, sixteen years of age and older based on FDA approval. However, I need to ask, why limit this requirement to those only in higher-risk designated sports? Especially with winter sports being indoors, why would you not require all participants sixteen and older be vaccinated to participate? Also, please clarify whether athletes will be, will need to be fully vaccinated prior to the future seasons. Fully vaccinated is generally two weeks following the second dose. This will be seven weeks of time for an unvaccinated individual from the start of the process. Believe it or not, this means winter athletes would need to start the process in the next week, which is quicker. October first deadline for the first shot, then you are requiring those already participating in fall sports. What was passed tonight needs more clarification for the community. Thank you for having these hard discussions, doing your best for our community, and passing reasonable steps to protect our community. Best regards, Todd Patori."
That's a really good point, something we should talk about now, sooner than later.
Yeah, especially with the, the winter sports, the, um, the time period of being fully vaccinated. By the ti-, I don't know when winter sports start.
I don't know either. I believe him, look.
November?
October first would not give you enough time.
What's that?
On October first would not give you enough time.
Yeah, we weren't thinking really.
But I mean, I don't think necessarily, I mean, the rules out there, I mean, first of all, I think we, as, as we proposed it, it does apply to all future seasons. We, we, and the reason for the high risk is that's what the CDC guideline is. That's what we're doing, we're following the CDC guideline. So, but I, and I definitely think we certainly included that for all future sports. So I don't, I mean, people know that, that they have to be vaccinated to start the sport. So just because there's a, if they want to wait till, you know, September thirtieth, they put themselves at risk for not starting that season or not even trying out.
But I think it's important, since we just did this tonight, that that word go out to all, you know, through all the channels.
No, I agree.
Through the coaches, through the, especially the coaches, they could reach out to the players and say, "Look, you're going to be starting in November. You got to make a decision now."
Well, is that reasonable, Nate, to have that winter, um, one that we said by the start of the season? Or like a week in? If they need to schedule, um?
I think before the start.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable, like if it's a November-ish start time, that gives them plenty of time to get vaccinated.
We'll probably-
Can that message then go out tomorrow to the sports teams that are at high risk?
Because it's saying two day, two weeks after the second shot, right?
That's when they're fully vaccinated.
Well, it'd only, it'd only be five weeks.
It's a seven-week process.
It's five weeks.
Yeah, it's, it's only going to be Pfizer if you're talking about sixteen and over, so.
It's three weeks?
It's three weeks.
Three weeks after the dose.
So, so we're saying then, you know, their first and second shot by the time their, um, that sports start?
Well, first and second plus two weeks is the-
Yeah, but I think that's what you're saying is that the time would be-
Before the October. That was the point, is I think-
Yeah.
For the fall sports, they would need to start their vaccination process before we are saying that the winter sports need to have their first shot done, which is okay if we decide that, because we acknowledge that we are way behind here. And it's just a weird coincidence, I think, that, that they're going to have to start their first shot before.
Right.
And I think we just acknowledge that and accept it, like.
So is that, is that enough time? Because I don't know when exactly winter sports start for them to be vaccinated and to be fully vaccinated. Okay.
It's, uh, November fifteenth is winter.
Oh, okay, okay.
I got an extra.
It'll take, uh, it'll go through a very last minute, November fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to get word out.
And I, I don't disagree with the, the other risk sports, but I know that this, I feel like was a lift to get to this. I also, you know, think that, um, the vaccination for employees, too. We have a lot of, um, a lot of people who are vaccinated who are at risk around people who are not vaccinated. And I don't, I know that, I think, was Bethlehem, and I think Bethlehem's the only one right around here that was required for employees. I kind of want to see what happens with that. And I would also like to go that route, you know? Only vaccinating part of the population that is eligible is not really doing the maximum possible. I mean, I'm not opposed to the, the medium risk either, but I don't know what you guys think. I think that, that might be, um, I think making this step tonight with the high risk is, is a big step, knowing the community, et cetera.
I think we're following the guidance, you know? So the guidance is very clear about high-risk sports. It does not recommend it, you know, it encourages it, but doesn't recommend it for medium-risk or low-risk sports.
But in the winter, more sports are indoors, aren't they?
Regan, maybe you know.
In the winter?
Yeah.
Of a one.
Yeah, okay. That's what I mean. So it's all of them are, like, consistent. So it's all of them are considered high-risk sports, so everybody should be vaccinated.
Are they all considered?
They didn't, they, last year, they didn't consider all of them high-risk. Remember the indoor, indoor track that was outdoor was moderate risk, I believe. Basketball was high-risk, wrestling, competitive cheer.
Yeah, so the ones that are high-risk.
Ice hockey.
Ice hockey.
What about powder puff football?
I'm sorry?
What about powder puff football?
That's not recognized by New York State Public High School.
I have a question here about if we were to do powder puff football, would we require all the players? When is powder puff football?
Yeah, what is?
Part of homecoming usually.
Yeah.
And actually, there's not enough time.
No.
Not enough time. What is it? Unless you're.
What are we talking about?
It's, it's girls playing football, and I think it has modified rules, which I don't really know.
It's flag, it's flag. Flag football for, I think the juniors play the seniors, and I think the last time the freshmen played the sophomores. I think that started just recently, maybe two years ago. Andy Shaggy said that's true.
Another opportunity to encourage vaccinations. I think it's a big step tonight just to get in, in line with the CDC guidelines and the Department of Health guidelines. I think, I think that's great that we're there. If you want to talk about further restricting it for, you know, medium risks or anything like that, it's another discussion that we could have now, or we can sit on it. But I think just getting to where we're at, I think it's a good spot to be at.
Yeah, I think that probably would take some longer discussion or longer thought.
And, I mean, if we want to talk about it, we could talk about it, if there's anything further.
So I'm very pro-vaccination. I think we should be encouraging vaccination, but I don't think we should be degrading from the guidance. I think if our message is that we should be consistent with guidance, we should just, but my opinion is we should just be consistent with the guidance.
And not further, not further restricting guidance?
Yeah.
That's fair.
I think that's reasonable.
Because otherwise then we're saying that we know better, which we said don't.
I think that's absolutely fair to stick with the guidance that we have.
See, I don't know if that's an SMN that goes out, or is that like just a message through the coaches?
I think we're, we're.
Okay.
There's a lot of communication.
Blanca, did you have something?
Well, back to your point about vaccinating requirements for teachers, what school districts are doing it?
I thought it's just Bethlehem.
It's just Bethlehem?
Are you talking about employees?
Yes.
I think it's just Bethlehem around here.
Okay. And Rebecca, do you know, is there any guidance or recommendations around that, specific to teachers?
I don't know off the top of my head, no. I mean, I think.
The OSHA.
It's encouraged.
Right.
For everyone that is eligible.
The OSHA guidelines are going to be, didn't Biden say that, that any employer with one hundred or more employees will be required? Where do we fit in in that?
We're test, I think it's, I think it's vaccinate or weekly testing.
Is it, others a test?
I think that's the.
Fall under the.
Yeah, do we fall under OSHA?
We're, no, well.
I don't know where we fall.
Employees.
Yeah.
We fall under the New York State Department of Health guidelines, which require vaccination or weekly testing.
Right. So we're in, in line with that now, once we get our, we'll, we'll have our testing up at speed here. It's also testing for anybody that's, that wants testing. They don't have, they don't, you don't have a requirement, you don't have to be sick, you don't have to be anything. I know, I know, we're, we're sending our kids every weekend to Rite Aid to do drive-through testing. It's free, it's easy, on our own, every Saturday, just to make sure. So, but I know, I'm pretty sure the guidance says we have to make it available to anybody that wants it. So if you're a family that wants to lean forward for other people's safety, then you should be requesting tests as much as you want, I think. Or getting them through the free resources like we're doing.
Any other comments or questions or issues? Barb?
The date of our interview of the potential candidates is what?
That's a week from tonight, so I think it's the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, and what time?
I think six PM.
Okay.
Yes, would it be here?
Six PM is what it's listed on the website, so we're going to make sure.
The other question, who's going to be developing the questions that we'll ask these people? Or the Communications Committee? I, I'd be glad to offer my help, but I don't know if you've assigned anybody to that task or.
No, so I know we had questions from before, I don't know if anybody has those questions?
I, I've got a few.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
So if I remember correctly, we used the same set of questions the past previous time, then we had the, the people who were, who's running for those positions sit in the, take turns answering. But I don't remember if someone else, do we have a student in the past? Asked, asked the questions?
It was a student moderator.
Student moderator? We haven't heard from like any PTAs that want to be involved or PTA Council, right, Marie?
No, they typically do the candidate piece, so.
I think, I remember, I vaguely remember, if I'm correct, but. Regan sends out the questions to us before, and we can look at them if we want to tweak any or add any, if we have that opportunity. We should do it.
Yeah, I like the opportunity. I like the opportunity to see the question.
Yeah, just read through them, see if there's anything, maybe it's dated or not dated, you know?
Yeah, I'm going to go out on a limb and probably say that what we're dealing with now is probably not the same type of questions that we're dealing with last time you had to interview.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could send those out to all of us, Regan, that would be great.
I could share them, sure.
And then, I don't know if it's appropriate if it's me or somebody else who's asking questions to all the candidates?
I think it should be somebody that has.
Yeah.
So we can just concentrate on listening.
Yeah. Why don't I ask Mr. Piscatelli to see if there may be a student who'd be interested in doing it?
Yeah.
Maybe there's someone in the media department who wants to make his burger on camera debut.
Then we could just focus on the answers.
Is it going to be here, or is it going to be?
Right here.
It's here, good. And the candidates will be here too?
Yeah.
And I think, like in the past, we can make a decision that night?
Yeah. Right, then we went to like executive. Yeah, and then afterwards we made a decision.
Yeah.
Maybe like a form, maybe it was like, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get those questions and then I guess review them, Barb, was that, that was your question? Yeah, so one week from tonight, and Dr. Wiles, you said there were five people?
We have five individuals who've sent in letters and entries.
Okay. Any other issues, ideas, or sharing?
On behalf of the Communications Committee, we really appreciate you turning these in at every meeting, because if we see something early enough, we can deal with it, so that's been great. Thank you.
All right, so if there are no other comments or questions, I will have a, take a motion to adjourn. Blanca, second, Barb, all in favor? Pass is eight zero. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.